All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our City Council Governance Committee meeting. The time is now, let's say 11:39?
11:48. Thirty, let's say 11:48.
11:48, or, no, 11:39. All right. We'll go ahead and we'll get off. The city clerk?
Yes, sir. Mayor Merrick-Hur?
Here.
Councilmember Trevino?
Here.
Councilmember Viegano? She's here. Councilmember Saldana?
Here.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Sundavall?
Here.
Mayor, do you have a question?
All right, well, welcome, everyone. We have several items of ours in a longer time period to get through them, so we'll start in order. We'll start with the approval of the meeting minutes from our governance meeting of October 23rd. There's a motion, a second for approval of the City Council Governance Committee meeting minutes of October 23rd. Questions, clarifications? All right, hearing members in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Item number two. Item number two is a briefing on possible action regarding the development of evaluations encompassing review of executives appointed by the mayor and city council.
Mayor, council. I'm here representing on behalf of the mayor's office and your behalf with respect to the performance review for the council-appointed executives. About a year ago, in the mayor's office, we found ourselves in a situation where we were looking at the need to provide performance reviews for the city manager, city clerk, and city auditor. The, last year, we had no specified process or performance metrics for any of these positions last year, so we, through the mayor's office, coordinated the review, and we are responsible for the review process for 2018. You'll also recall that in the process last year of looking at performance metrics and performance evaluations for these executives at the council adopted, or finalized, I should say, performance review metrics and standards for the city manager, the city auditor, and the city clerk. This is, there's a packet that the city clerk can hand out here that actually this may be a reminder of what that was discussed with respect to those standards for this calendar You also recall that, following that process, the council elected to hire consultants specifically through a process, they hired Siegel Waters Consulting to create a consultant-managed performance review process and also look at the appropriate compensation levels for not only the city manager, city clerk, and auditor, but also added the presiding judge of the municipal court to that process. The purpose of our presentation today is to update you on what will ultimately be the conclusion of the 2018 performance review process, and then also Linda Wisher this year with Siegel Waters to provide you an update with regards to her process. So with regards to performance review for this year, we will be asking that the staff, the clerk, the auditor, and the city manager provide the city council a self-evaluation of their performance and their performance metrics by November the 21st. The mayor will ask the chairman of the audit committee, the audit committee to have a special meeting by which the city auditor will be reviewed, and they will make recommendations. We're asking that the municipal court advisory committee review the presiding judge, and that we're recommending that the governance committee review the city clerk's performance, and that all of your respective committee recommendations be forwarded to the entire city council for consideration and review. The city manager would be reviewed by the entire city council. In terms of a timeline, we're proposing that those committee meetings occur for the various positions between December the 3rd and December the 11th, and that there are opportunities in executive session for review and discussion as permitted, and that if there was formal action with respect to compensation or performance review, that that would occur at meetings either in late December or January. So at this point, I'm going to conclude my presentation, and before I do, I was wondering if you have any particular questions before I hand it over to our consultant.
Councilman Zaino.
Thank you, Trey, for your presentation, for your work on this. Is this formal action on compensation as the last bullet? That means we will be taking a council action and a vote?
That's what's contemplated there, and that could be for any of the particular executives.
Just confirming, thank you.
Let me introduce Linda Wisher from Siegel's Water.
Good morning, mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to just briefly update you on where we're at in the performance review and compensation survey process. And then going backwards. Trey already indicated the purpose of hiring, of engaging Siegel Waters was to take a look at performance evaluations for the four council-appointed executives, city manager, city clerk, city auditor, and the presiding judge of the municipal court. As part of that, we began the process with extensive one-on-one interviews of the mayor and all the council members, as well as the four incumbents in the positions that we're researching. We provided a summary report, and it was basically sort of an overview of the basics of performance management and the types of circumstances that would be beneficial for the city to be looking at when it looks at metrics and performance of those four individuals. We will be preparing what, we're going to go over some of the objectives or observations that were brought forward after those interviews that I spoke about initially, but part of that process indicated that there was a need for job summaries or job descriptions for those four positions, so we will be providing a draft of those by the 19th of November. Our compensation survey was developed, it was a customized survey with regards to the four positions, and we identified what we call benchmark organizations, or those peers that it was appropriate to compare the city of San Antonio to, and within that context, the survey went out to those peers on November the 2nd with a request for their participation and response by November the 14th. Again, there are eight critical factors for ensuring effective performance evaluations. I'm not going to necessarily read through each one of these. I understand each of you have a copy on your laptop, as well as perhaps a hard copy, but again, I think these are the four a-critical areas that should be addressed in a performance evaluation process, and these are the things that were highlighted in stakeholder interviews. So these are basically the top observation based on those stakeholder interviews, and I think it was fairly, it was very interesting to me in that it was fairly consistent with regards to kinds of questions and issues that were raised. So going through some of those observations, obviously, there was a desire to have a more structured process, more structured timeline with regards to the fiscal year performance rather than the calendar year. Again, I mentioned no job summaries for those positions existed. There was a lack of consistency and clarity of the expectations of various council members with regards to these positions and their performance, and they were looking for consensus on the behaviors and values that should be demonstrated by the executives. Again, there was a desire for a well-defined goals and metrics, if you will, regarding those main goals and expectations aligned with what we call behavioral indicators, which provides an opportunity for everyone who is performing the evaluation as an evaluator to have a more consistent identification of what those indicators look like when performance is successful. One of the things that was also brought forth is that perhaps we needed a greater emphasis on customer service, customer focus, and so certainly not only external measurements of customer service, but internal as well. And, of course, incorporation and focus on the city's core values. In addition, there were questions regarding consistency with regards to the performance ratings themselves and the rating scale, as well as how various criteria should be weighted for the overall performance evaluation. Again, back to the structured, formalized process, there's a desire for a greater process in the self-evaluation process, as well as the evaluation prepared by the council. And so one of the observations was there was a desire for more feedback from direct reports to those four positions, not only internally with regards to staff, but externally as well. There is a concern that it was not clear and needed to be identified what the link between compensation and performance should be, and requires clarification of the roles and responsibilities to the council and board committees regarding various performance feedback. One of the issues that arose is currently we're using, I'm sorry. Currently, we're on a calendar year performance basis, and certainly one of the things that was raised is whether or not it should be on a fiscal year basis. As I mentioned before, the compensation survey has been sent to the various peers. I'll give you a quick rundown of the peer comparators that have been identified. We are using 10:00. City of Austin, the city of Dallas, the city of El Paso, the city of Fort Worth, the city of Houston, the city of Phoenix, the city of Charlotte, North Carolina, the city of San Jose, California, the city of Oklahoma City, and the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia. Those are the main city or municipality comparators. In addition, supplemental data is being gathered from various private sector entities in the areas such as SAWs, CPS, the university health system, the Alamo Community College, Bear County, et cetera, a few others in the area. So all of those are part of the compensation survey. Our plan is to have the analysis prepared and provided by December the 7th for review and discussion, with a final compensation report with recommendations by January the Just very briefly on transition, this sort of is a transition year, and we want to utilize the goals and performance measures that were already developed during the goal-setting process in the spring, and we want to incorporate a new rating scale with regards to four levels of rating, needs improvement, fully successful, commendable, and outstanding. The recommendation is to include not only the four core values that are so important throughout the organization, but certainly to identify core and specific competencies required of incumbents in these four positions. You will note that the four core values I mentioned, some of the competencies that are recommended include leadership and developing others, service excellence, and strategic planning and organization. As I indicated earlier, weighting the various criteria within the performance evaluation, we have recommended 25, 20% be weighted on the core competencies and core values, with 25% on what we call specific competencies, and those will be specific to the job, and finally, 55% overall to the objectives and goals for the year. That's a very quick run-through. Does anyone have any questions?
All right. Thank you, Linda, for the presentation. Just to rewind here for a minute, you know, just as the city staff has devoted, so has the city council, to the process improvement, continuous improvement, it's been relayed over the last several years, couple of years, certainly this past year, that we wanted a more standardized and predictable flow for performance evaluations as it relates to the four appointed, city council-appointed executives, the city manager, the city clerk, the city auditor, and the presiding municipal court judge. So that's where we are today. This is an update on the process. I just have one question. Going to your previous slide, the proposed weighting, and even the slide, two slides before that, with regard to the proposed evaluation rating scale, where is that from? Is that just your recommendation, or is that based on peer review?
It's based on industry practice and Siegel Waters' recommendations.
Okay. I'd like to dig a little bit deeper into the recommendation on those specific things and the rationale for that as we move through the rest of this process, but I'll move now to Councilman Viegano.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I do have a question, because we kept saying over and over to establish the review for fiscal year regardless of the calendar year, but the contracts run through the calendar year, is that correct? Trey, anybody, that contracts are running through the calendar year?
We have only one employer that's under contract, and it is on the calendar year.
So one of the things that I want to make sure that we, when looking at this and reviewing it, and when the self-evaluation happens, that, or the self-appraisal happens, that it is going to be consistent with just the year, the work of the body of work with the year, correct, for the self-appraisals? Trey?
That's correct.
Okay. So that, all of that will be communicated to our, to the four appointees? Okay. And can you talk a little bit more about how it will work for the more feedback from direct reports inside and outside of the organization? What does that look like?
We're still working on the finalization of that part of the information, but it would be surveys to identify direct reports for each position that basically respond to the core competencies and the core values of the organization, and how they interact with that position.
Okay. All right. I think this is very much needed, so thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? And for the benefit of my colleagues, you should also note that a very similar process is underway for CPS and for SAWs and various iterations of that. The whole goal here is to make sure that as we set compensation, we're doing so in a defensible way from one year to the next, so appreciate the work, and we'll have an update on the next step as we get to it. What's that?
As Linda mentioned, we're going to start to see some of the survey information come back, and then by December the 7th, there's going to be, they'll have a preliminary report back by December the 7th, so that could permit you, as a council, to hear more recommendations in either executive session or in special meetings, some sort of.
Okay. And I'll be scheduling my meetings with council members shortly after the holidays as well for, as it relates to the 2018 calendar year. So, all right, thank you very much. We'll move on now to item number three.
Item number three is a briefing on a council consideration request by councilmember Westfield Trevino to move forward amendments related to the MF-33 and MF-25 zoning districts as part of recently adopted comprehensive land use category.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. A handout is being provided to each of you outlining the council consideration request on the agenda, along with the staff recommendation. This handout basically summarizes the memo that's in the system for this particular So once you get the handout on page two, you'll notice on the right, the land use category is adopted by city council on October 11th. The council consideration request submitted by councilman Trevino is to remove the MF-33 district from the medium density residential category and add MF-25 to the neighborhood mixed-use category. I've circled those two land use categories in green on that particular page. After the CCR was submitted, the mayor's office convened districts one and seven, as well as the planning staff, to learn better understanding issues relating to the request. During the discussions, there were three issues raised, and I've highlighted those on page three of the handout. The potential height of new developments, compatibility, and the future designation of small lots. First, potential height of new developments. There are currently small clusters of parcels zoned MF-33 in a number of areas near and around downtown, due primarily, of course, to zoning code convergence. There are concerns that these parcels, currently zoned MF-33, can allow developments where the height scale would be out of context with the surrounding area. Second, compatibility. On very early draft land use maps, some areas in the downtown and west side sub-area plans are shown with the medium density residential land use category. There has been some concern expressed that allowing up to MF-33 densities and height would be out of context with the surrounding areas. Also, some of these neighborhoods include areas with blocks of what we call MF4 zoning, which, if categorized as medium density residential, may allow for increased density if they were to be rezoned. If you recall, the R1 or zoning district was removed from the urban mode density residential category, given concerns raised as to how it was being applied. And finally, as it relates to the future designation of small lots, there are a number of parcels that would likely be rezoned to the R1 and R2 zoning district if those are adopted by council. Those are also currently shown as medium density residential on some very early draft maps, and the concern here is that, expressed in aggregate, the densities of these smaller parcels would range from 21 units to about 35 units per acre, thus indicating the need to rezone them to a higher density as allowed in the medium density residential land use category. And regarding the separate request to add the MF-25 zoning district to neighborhood mixed-use land use category, it was noted that having the current maximum of MF18 limits the ability for greater density and transit support of land use along key neighborhood quarters. So page four of the handout shows a staff's recommendation as response to each request. Staff recommends not removing the MF-33 zoning district from the medium density residential land use category. However, we are proposing several alternate solutions that were facilitated in the discussions with the mayor's office to address the issues raised. In regards to the potential height of new developments, two possible approaches would be rezoning those parcels, and then also reviewing the ordinance we currently have in place, addressing the application of height allowances to ensure that they're intended application as you. We will continue to work with our SA-TMR sub-area planning team members on the most appropriate patterns and locations for the various land use categories in each of the sub-area plans. The draft land use maps that we've had to date have not been taken out to the public community, but will be after the work has been completed in these areas. Staff recommends moving forward with a process to add MF-25 zoning to the neighborhood mixed-use land use category. The process should allow for public review and comment, including review by the planning commission's TAC, the planning commission, the zoning commission, before consideration approval by city council. This completes my briefing, mayor, and I would happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Bridget. Councilman Trevino.
Thank you, mayor. First, I want to thank you and your office for helping to continue the conversation on something that is affecting our entire city, but specifically what we're seeing in the inner city. So I also want to thank you, Bridget, and your staff for working with us to help address the concerns that have been brought up by these neighborhoods, and I think first and foremost, we must acknowledge the fact that these neighborhoods have pointed out quite clearly that there's incompatible development happening, and they also want to just simply feel like we're listening to some of these issues. And there is, of course, never going to be a silver bullet, but I think that there is a path forward here, and so again, I want to thank staff and the mayor's office, Councilman Sundavall, that we convened at my field office, and I want to thank all the neighborhoods that have come together to offer their input, their support. I want to, again, reaffirm that you are being heard. It's really, truly a part of an issue where we find ourselves many times with development and in design, sometimes we're caught up in this idea that there's only one option available, one solution, and we've shown here that there is more available to us, and that's the way we should be growing our city, to truly find and capitalize on good ideas, ideas that are done collaboratively to help move our inner-city communities in a way that they feel, they know that their issues are being addressed, while also looking at the overall concerns of the entire city. So I also want to acknowledge all the letters that have come in. We certainly appreciate the concerns being addressed and can agree that I think we've found a balanced approach to moving us forward. Again, these neighbors are really, truly in need of this kind of attention, and, you know, by allowing the R1, R2 code to be created, it's really given us another option, and I think that that is something that we should all build on, on top of the fact that, again, mayor, I want to again point out that we talked about committing to pushing the large area rezonings much faster in this process, because what we know is that, what we call rezon is that they're really corrective zones, and as Bridget pointed out, there's been some transportation errors in the past. You have parts of the city that have existed for a long, long time and have had to go through many iterations of zoning designations and translation errors, and I think that's why we have arrived to some of the issues or points that we've come to today, and I think that these are the steps that help us to address that, to work together on that, and I certainly support this. Are we needing a motion to move these recommendations forward to full council? Okay, well, so, again, I just want to say thank you again, Bridget. With that, I motion to...
I'm sorry, if I may, I hate to interrupt, but in terms of the motions, we'd be looking at moving forward the MF-25 and adding that, so we'd have to go through a process to get back to full council for that.
So, but you need action to advance...
Yes, I need action for that. Yes, sir.
Yeah. I would say, a motion, I would entertain a motion to advance these recommendations to the next steps in the process.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to move this through the next steps of the process.
Right. Was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion, Councilman Sundavall? Councilman Trevino?
Thanks, mayor. I just want to make sure that I go through the emails that I'm getting, I'm looking at the backup letters. I don't know if they're support, or maybe Councilman Trevino, El Monte Vista, Tobin Hill, Beacon Hill, King William, without reading the whole thing, the click notes version, they support this or they don't support this?
They support this, and so, again, and maybe I was a little too brief in my thanks. I want to thank, I've been thanking everybody, but I specifically want to thank the neighbors that have come together on this, and Chris... And Chrissy from my staff has done an outstanding job working with council staff to make sure that the voices are being heard. I want to thank specifically all the neighborhoods that we've been in touch with, in and out of District One. I mean, this isn't just a District One issue. There were some concerns that we were having to carve something out because we didn't have an option. But now that we have the R1, R2, that gives us more options. And that's what I was referring to, making sure that we have more options available to us. We don't simply have to be forced to carve out something because we don't have any other direction to go. So, I, yes, it's my understanding that we have the full support.
Okay, and they see this, they understand the implications, the consequences, the benefits, and are ready for us to move to the next?
Well, I think we're all ready to move forward on this. The point I would make is that there's more work to do, that this is simply one layer to a multi-layered strategy to address a lot of these concerns. So, this is one of those steps.
And Bridget, to the staff, how are you all feeling about the next step coming forward on this? This is y'all's recommendation as well?
Yes, so, we do support moving forward with adding MF-25. However, we don't support removing MF-33. But as we outlined on page four, there are a number of other solutions that we can work towards achieving the goal as outlined in the CCR.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Sandoval. Anybody else? So, I want to acknowledge that, Councilman Pugh.
So, what is the, tell me about the next process. Are you going to go out to the neighborhoods and the communities again?
So, in terms of adding MF-25 to neighborhood mixed-use, yes, we go through a process that allows for public input. So, we have to go through, back to the Planning Commission TAC, the Planning Commission's...
So, what about R1 and R2s?
The R1, R2 is a process that's going through the council process now. I believe it's back to City Council on Thursday. So, if those districts were to be approved by council on Thursday, we would look at how they would fall into a particular land use category. So, that step is more or less dependent upon council action on Thursday. We're just pointing out that there are options and solutions if that were to move forward. Those are actually two different processes because our process already...
Thank you, Councilwoman Pugh. Thank you, Councilwoman Pugh. And I want to acknowledge our Tier One associations, our neighborhoods that are here, Cessna D here, as well as Councilman Coleman, and also the difficult work that the staff of our offices had. I feel badly for you, Councilman Trevino, but it seems like every single one of these issues has been challenging and difficult that you've taken the leadership on, so appreciate that work. First rule in public policymaking is do no harm. The intent of the original proposal would have addressed the neighborhood concerns. Unfortunately, it wasn't going to leave other areas of town without impacts. And so, we've been working very hard, and Councilman Trevino, I think, has found a great solution to ensure that not only are the neighborhoods that are experiencing the incompatible development taken care of moving forward, but we also have the ability to prevent those negative impacts from happening in other parts of the city. So, it's going to require some cooperation because there are multiple moving parts to this solution. So, Bridget, you have to let us know when things are getting off track with the rest of this, including large-area rezones and the R1, R2 process. So, please keep us apprised of that, but we want to move this forward so everybody, I think, ultimately gets what they're looking for. So, thank you again for all the hard work, and we'll now, Councilman Sandoval.
Thank you. Thank you very much for taking the lead on this, Councilman. And thank you, Bridget, and your team, Rudy, for working with the neighborhoods. I just wanted to know, as we move forward on this, what's the plan for keeping the neighborhoods and the council members apprised of the progress as it goes forward?
In terms of adding MF-25, there is a process that we have to go through. So, we would go through getting public input on adding that particular zoning category or zoning district to that particular land use category. So, that's one process. In terms of the other steps or solutions outlined, as we're going through our sub-area planning process, we are engaging planning team members, the community. We have a number of meetings left that we still have to have for the sub-area plans that we're currently working on. So, that involves some level of engagement, and based upon the CCR and the public participation process that you've outlined, really ramping up what we do in terms of that particular process. If R1, R2 is adopted by council on Thursday, we would look at which land use category it would fall into. So, of course, that would mean notifying neighborhoods, associations, getting out to the community, let them know that this particular zoning district has been adopted, and where it would go and which land use category it would go. And of course, we work with Development Services so that as cases come in, everyone will be aware of where it is and where it falls.
So, my question is more about how you would work with the council offices and keep them apprised as it goes forward?
We actually have monthly meetings with the council offices throughout the S.A. Tomorrow process. So, we update all the council staff on where we are with the process, what decisions are being made, and briefing them also on individual plans and the process of the plan. So, for example, with the land use process that we just went through, we met with the council offices to let them know this is what's going on. And so, we have monthly meetings with your staff.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to brief council members, too.
No, no, as long as the staff has access to you and is able to get an update on what's going on.
Yes, we do have monthly meetings, I believe the third Friday of our month.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. There is a motion and a second for approval of the staff recommendations on item number three?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Item number four is consideration of at-large appointments to the Planning Commission. And Mayor and Council, there are six lots to fill. We received over 50 applications total. You made up the committee that voted through all of those, and the committee came up with 12 recommendations for interviews. Of those 12, we have approximately 10 here today that will be interviewed. Six of the slots that are going to be filled is what the total is. One of those will only have a term that expires October 2019 because of Casey Wellington's resignation, while all the other five, those terms will expire in 2020. These are two-year terms, and as you know, the entire board is comprised of nine members for two-year terms. Of course, they meet monthly at the Development Services Office on the second and fourth Wednesdays at 2:00 p.m. So, with your permission, Mayor, we can go ahead and begin the interviews.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so, the way we'll do this is we'll have, in alphabetical order, each of our candidates come forward. I think if we can have folks wait in the outside as they're called in, to give everybody a fair chance.
So, would all the applicants at this time follow Brandon Smith? And as you're called in, you'll get your opportunity to be interviewed by the Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Who's going to be first?
The first person is Christopher Garcia.
Is Mr. Garcia here?
Can you just walk down? He's behind you.
Christopher, you're going to be first. You can check the podium, please.
Be mindful, it's time for a first.
Mayor, we have a timer.
Okay. All right, Chris, if you can do us a two-minute statement, and then we'll alternate it up for questions.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. Does anybody say anything? And have we started the...
Yes.
Yes, okay. Currently serving on the Planning Commission is the Vice Chair, and I'm asking for your consideration and support to continue serving on the Planning Commission because I have a deep passion for San Antonio. As Planning Commissioners, we are charged with balancing the needs of a development or redevelopment and requirements for our master plan or as S.A. Tomorrow. Accomplishing this balance requires an understanding of the intent of the master plan, where our city has been, and where it is going, along with the associated micro and macro effects of our commission's decisions. The growth of our city needs to be managed in a way that encourages responsible development that is in concert with S.A. Tomorrow, the master plan, we citizens help create. We can have the perks of a big city while maintaining our small, family-oriented style of life here in San Antonio. As a former HOA president and current board member, I always look to how development will affect the neighborhoods. It's why I always ask if there's any questions or concerns from communities at our meetings. We can have the exciting developments we need and maintain our quality of life. Our boards and commissions have been formed to handle variations to our codes, plans, and guidelines. I am currently completing service on the Building Related and Fire Code Appeals Advisory Board, and also served in the past on the Zoning Board of Adjustments, making those kinds of decisions. I have served when it came to updating their associated codes and standards, and I have that valuable experience. As for my personal background, I'm a product of the edge of the school district, with parents and in-laws that still live in the area, so I get a feeling for what some of the older neighborhoods' concerns are. I graduated from Trinity University with an engineering degree, spent about 10 years in the private sector, doing work here in San Antonio and South Texas, even a few out-of-state projects. If work didn't take me to different parts of the city, volunteer with different campaigns and causes did. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. All right, questions for Mr. Garcia? Councilman Sandoval? Well, why don't we just, we'll go around for each candidate.
Okay, Chris, thank you for your application. One of the processes that the city's working on is the comprehensive climate action and adaptation plan right now, and it will eventually come to Planning Commission for review. I just want to know if you know anything about climate change or climate adaptation, and what you think your role as a planning commissioner might be in helping the city meet its climate goals?
Yeah, so, I was an engineer, trust me, the science on climate change is what it is. Also, on the other board that I'm on, the Building Related Code, we just motioned to adopt the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, which, as you know, is about energy conservation in buildings and stuff of that nature. It's interesting because the state actually only adopts the energy, its codes and standards, I think, every six years, but we decided to, you know, go ahead and move ahead and adopt the 2018 code for energy conservation, even though kind of, we could have left it alone, but we decided to keep it up to date. So, our responsibility on the Planning Commission to look at what the proposal is and see how this is going to affect our city, and how is it going to affect the development, how is it going to affect how our city changes, and how does it affect the other things that are under purview of the Planning Commission, you know, like you have S.A. corridors, so that's transportation, so that leads to reduction in emissions and stuff of that nature.
You, Councilman Sandoval? Councilman Trevino?
Thank you very much. Yeah. You're seeking reappointment for the Planning Commission, and as you saw, that we, going through the S.A. Tomorrow plans, one of the concerns of many of our neighborhoods is about their neighborhood plans that they've worked on for years and years will go away. What has been your thoughts and positions on this currently sitting on the board?
Yeah, so, that's definitely something that I've heard, and I understand that. Honestly, some of those plans have been there for decades, and so, I don't think there's anything wrong with reevaluating it. I mean, has the neighborhood changed? Do they still want to implement those? If they do, that's fine. We'll just have, I think we should implement them and kind of refresh them, if you will. And if they don't want to change how the master plan is, that's fine, we'll just put a current date on it. But if the neighborhood has changed, because like I said, some of this is from 10 years ago, 20 years ago, from the 90s or 80s or beyond that, if that's the case, then it would be a good opportunity to bring it up to date. Maybe the goals have changed throughout the years, maybe there's new residents that have come in there, maybe the, some of the things they thought they wanted, they started to happen, and they decided, we don't really want to do those things anymore. So, I see this as a good opportunity to update the plans with what's going on today in the city and those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Councilman Pugh. So, Chris, my question is, we're kind of in a transition period right now before S.A. Tomorrow was truly, fully implemented with all the community plans and the regional plans and so forth. I'd like to get your perspective on that. As you make decisions parcel by parcel under the old way of doing things, where are the pressure points, and how do you see us best able to move forward on S.A. Tomorrow?
Basically, the S.A. Tomorrow process itself, because it's going through, and like you said, evaluating parcel by parcel to make recommendations to bring those land usage categories up to date. We see a lot of cases where the zoning is, matches what's going on, but the land usage doesn't, because sometime back in the day, somebody just put a big paintbrush, and there's stuff that doesn't match. So, I think that really comes into it. Yeah, I can understand the concern, because, you know, parcel by parcel, you can start changing things, but that's why I always kind of love to see what's around this. You know, obviously, it doesn't make sense to put like an industrial usage in front of a single-family home, right? But that's why I love to see what's going on around this neighborhood, where is it located, what is the community? You know, when they show up and they vocalize their support, or they're not in favor of something, what are they saying, what are their concerns? Sometimes we will make motions for continuance because you can tell that, you know what, they're almost to a point where they can reach an agreement with the developer or the property owner. So, let's do a continuance, let's let them work it out, and they'll come back to us. There've been a couple of cases where, I think, staff recommended a change, but the community, I can tell, was not in favor, so I voted in favor as a community, but I think that the rest of the commissioners voted a different way, but that's okay, that's why you have nine of us. So, that's the trick. And then, if you wanted to make changes, the only thing you would do is you could start looking like at the Board of Adjustments, because Board of Adjustments, you have to meet. After S.A. Tomorrow is done, and we have, you know, how we want development to happen, you could take a key from the Board of Adjustments, because there you have to, if you want to make a change, you have a criteria that you have to meet, and you have to prove how you're meeting each criteria, but that's something that can be looked at later in this.
Great, thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Thanks very much for your application, your service, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, Mayor, the next, and Council, the next person is, the tough is June Cassidy, and she also has reapplied for reappointment. June, come.
Good morning, June. We'll give you two minutes for a statement, and then we'll go with your questions, Council.
Thank you. I would like to start by saying that both my work and my volunteer activities reflect my great interest in the future and the well-being of the city of San Antonio. In my work, I went back to, I had a graduate degree in 1980 from UTSA, it was a master's degree in urban planning and environmental management. My thesis was on how counties could deal with development, and it was published by the state and made available to all counties. I was working for San Antonio Research, preparing monthly articles on development in San Antonio, and I participated in environmental assessments in Mayor County and Lanco County. After that, I worked for a planning and engineering firm, and I prepared a subdivision and zoning applications. And then, I ended my working life as the executive director of a local nonprofit housing organization that provided counseling, loans, and construction management services to low-income families. I also oversaw the construction of new homes. In my volunteer activities, I was a member of some city boards and commissions, the zoning commission in the 1970s. I served on committees dealing with water, neighborhoods, flood plan and drainage, sign regulation. And then, when the Open Space Advisory Board was formed in 1990, I was the first board chairman for his first six years. We developed an open space plan. That's two minutes worth. Well, then, you can just ask him questions.
Thank you, June. We'll go around, Councilman Sandoval?
Hi, June. Thank you very much for serving and for reapplying to this position. One of the things that the Planning Commission will be asked to do is to look at the climate action adaptation plan that the city's developing. Just like to know how familiar you are with, well, A, with climate... Just like to know how familiar you are with, well, A, with climate change and its impact on cities, our process on developing a plan, and what role people feel cities can play in addressing climate action and adaptation.
Well, I think there is climate change effects, and I do think it affects the city of San Antonio. I'm currently serving on the Waste and Consumption Technical Working Group, and I hope I'm having some impact on that and the recommendations that will be made. And I think the plan is extremely critical to the future of San Antonio.
Thank you, Counselor Sandoval. Counselor, your opinion?
Thank you, Ms. Katchik, for your work. I guess I'm just kind of curious, as we're laying out a lot of, a lot of the growth of our city, we see a lot of pressure in the inner city.
Yes.
And a lot of, a lot of neighbors in the inner city feel like their voices are not just being heard. How do you, how do you help those neighbors feel like they have a voice in the planning commission?
Well, one of the things that I'm involved with at this time is as a member of the Board of the Conservation Society, we are working with the Office of Historic Preservation and also the local chapter, the AIA, to produce four workshops for inner-city neighborhoods inside Loop 410. And our topic is dealing with the change that occurs because of all the growth that is happening. So we are hoping to develop a way for neighborhoods to look at growth and to deal with it. A lot of this is a physical change that they automatically say no to, but there are ways, I think, they would accept it if we could get to a common way of looking at things and talking about it, rather than automatically saying no. So this is one of the efforts I'm involved in.
Thank you, Ms. Katchik. Thank you, Ms. Katchik.
Thank you very much, Ms. Katchik.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Andrew Usuna, and he also is seeking reappointment.
Thank you. I know we have, what, two minutes, three minutes here?
Good afternoon, Andrew. Yeah, so we're going to give everyone two minutes for a brief statement, and then we'll get into council questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Government Affairs Committee. I've had the privilege of serving on the Board of Adjustments for over three years, plus, oh, four years now. A little background on myself, I'm a lifelong resident of San Antonio. I graduated from Thomas Jefferson High School, attended UTSA, a management finance degree, and then Texas A&amp;M University, where I received a master's degree in real estate. My professional career of twenty-year-plus career in commercial real estate banking brought out, with Broadway Bank now, where I manage the commercial real estate lending group. And with that group, we focus on investment, real estate lending, projects all throughout San Antonio. We've been really fortunate to have really nice project booths in the downtown area, in South Side, West Side, all sectors of the city, where lending and commercial projects. With that, my planning experience, started my volunteer work with the city as a member of the Mayor's Max Basin Advisory Board, where then I moved to the Board of Adjustments, where I served, I think, five or six years, and chaired the Board of Adjustments in that capacity. When that kind of turned out, then I moved to the Planning Commission, where I obviously served my first term and seeking appointment in my second term. In that capacity, the fellow board members appointed me as a pro-TAM to the Planning Commission, but also the PTAC, so I'm a member of the Technical Committee Advisory Committee for the Planning Commission, and attended those meetings as well. So challenges that I see facing the city, first of all, you know, we know, I'm familiar with the SA tomorrow, transit-oriented development, military development concerns with that. Challenges that the city I see faces, like population growth, how are we going to handle the million-plus new residents that are coming into San Antonio? That needs to be balanced with the densities. Well, I'll answer your questions as you bring them up, but...
I'll start with that question.
Yes.
How are you balancing growth with the planning commission activities?
Right, exactly. So what we see with the city, million-plus in the next twenty years coming in, we need to implement, have those planning tools that are available to the planning commission to help create that, both housing stock and employment stock. Some of the challenges is that most of the neighborhoods, where you're trying to put in these higher densities to accommodate them, the neighborhoods on some points don't want to, want, want the densities aren't, they're not knowledgeable about what that density leads to them. So what I think we need to do is kind of work to kind of educate the neighborhoods and work with the neighborhoods. They have a very valuable place within the stakeholder table on working with, you know, the challenges that we have in creating those, you know, places where these people will live and create those densities. Some of the things that the city's kind of developed is transit-oriented development, the TOD, which will create the density around the transit locations, which kind of creates a density and also minimizes the traffic movement within the city, which is very important also, because if you, all kind of goes to the quality of life, you know, if you're able to minimize the time you spend in your car, able to have the higher densities, you live, you work, you play in that same area, then it just creates for a more vibrant San Antonio. So a lot of it is really just kind of understanding, giving the dignity, respect of the neighborhoods, letting them to know that, hey, you're a stakeholder in this, and we're not just going to push densities on you. There's, what we're trying to create that, there's a stakeholder, there's a place for the neighborhoods to be heard with that.
Thank you. Counselor Sandoval.
Hi, Mr. Usuna, thank you for being here. I apologize, I missed the beginning of your...
Oh, that's fine.
I wanted to ask you about climate action and adaptation. The city's got a process going on developing a plan, and one of the functions of the planning commission will be to review that plan. So I wanted to know, how familiar are you with climate change, the concept of it, and what role do you, how familiar are you with the process that the city's...
Was that part of the SA tomorrow? Is that within the SA tomorrow overall plan, or is this something where they should have that?
Well, there was a sustainability...
Yeah, exactly. There is that component within the SA tomorrow.
And it's sort of an expansion of that. And then what role do you think cities can play?
Yeah, well, that speaks, I just mentioned, like, the transit-oriented development is one piece of that, where if you're able to create those densities where you don't have to rely on cars, fossil fuels, you know, burning, idling in the cars, waiting to get from, you know, your home, you know, from one part of the city to the other part of the city, I think that's important. I think cities do play an important part in trying to kind of bend the arc, if you will, and carbon emissions and such, and, you know, that's, I think, cities playing an important part of that, and creating those densities is an important part of spending that. At some point, it's not sustainable that you're going to be sitting in your car to drive out, you know, further and further into suburbia, and it's not sustainable practice, I believe. But I am familiar with climate change, and I do, it's real, and the effects are real. When you see what's happening in California, you see the impacts of the flooding, the massive flooding that's occurred, that's all, that's all attributed to climate change.
Thank you, Mr. Usuna.
Thank you, Counselor Sandoval. Counselor, your opinion?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Usuna, thank you for reapplying.
Yes.
Yeah, and your service. What role do you think the planning commission has in helping to support affordable housing in San Antonio?
Right, I think that's a very, very good question. Affordable housing is a backbone, I think, of the service that the city can provide to its citizens. When you look at, you know, the number of people waiting for affordable housing certificates with the housing authority, it's a big, it's a big problem. I think the planning commission can serve that function in trying to make it an easier pathway for developers to come in and provide housing that meets the needs of those, of those citizens that are affordable, which is eighty percent of the level of median household income. That needs to be balanced out also with the neighborhoods and what the neighborhoods' wants and needs are as well. There's always, you always see pushback, and I've been on the planning commission, and worked dozens for years and years, and it's always an impound not in my backyard, and I've been fortunate that we've listened to the neighborhoods, and sometimes we voted, you know, against the neighborhoods in support of those projects, so it is a balancing act. I think the city has an important role in providing that venue to help facilitate that affordable housing. Just in private practice, we're involved in some number of affordable housing projects, including like the Baldwin with NRP, which is one of the three private partnership projects there on the near east side, so it's an important factor, and I would work to continue providing that affordable housing component. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Van DeGrom.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been discussing SA tomorrow, and part of the real concern that some of our neighborhoods have had is their community plans just disappearing all the way. And what has been your position on it?
Well, yeah, so a lot of the times, what you see is kind of a spot zone request within the, our spot land exchange within it, and most of the time, I'm not in favor of that. I mean, that's where the neighborhoods really come out in opposition, where you have this established land plan that's been in place, and then you have somebody coming in just trying to drop in specialty use, which is completely against the land, the land plan. So, and that particular, I mean, you have to listen to all sides, but I mean, I would, and I did support the neighborhoods issue, the neighborhoods' concerns, voted against that particular case. The neighborhoods, there's a planned process that's in place, neighbors have a stake in it, and they've invested a lot of time and energy, and they have a vision for what their neighborhoods want to look like, and for the most part, will support that vision the neighborhoods have, unless there's some compelling overriding reason that that would not, would not move forward, so.
Thank you, Counselor Van DeGrom. Thank you very much, Andrew.
Thank you. I appreciate your time here today.
Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, the next applicant is George Peck, also seeking reappointment.
George, we're giving everybody two minutes for a statement, and then we'll get into council questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Nuremeyer, members of the council. I appreciate you taking the time to interview me for renomination to the planning commission. The planning commission plays a vital role in the orderly growth and development of our community. Based on my personal and professional experience, interest in community service, understanding of the development process, and participation with industry organizations, and prior six years' experience on the planning commission, I can fulfill all the duties of the planning commissioner and add value to the commission's deliberations. I'm the current chair of the planning commission, also the current chair of the Technical Advisory Committee. I take these very seriously. Over the past two years, I have not missed a single meeting, and over the past six years, I think it's only been three or four meetings that I have missed. So I take it very seriously. I have served on several committees as a planning commission representative, so I'm very active outside of the normal planning commission meetings. My regular job, I'm a civil engineer by trade. I use and implement the UDC every day in the rural Wogan Garden. I have twenty-five years' experience using it, and my vast knowledge of the code will come in handy and will be extremely important to the commission and the Technical Advisory Commission Committee as we move into the 2020 UDC amendments, which will start before this term expires. Additionally, there's a little thing called ATLS 14 coming down the road, which is the review and implementation of new rainfall intensities for our area, based on historical weather data. I'm on a committee with TCI to vet these, this data and come up with the new intensities. So that will come to the TAC and to the planning commission probably in March of next year. So my professional experience will be, will be very helpful in reviewing those and coming up with something that works for our city. Additionally, that technical experience is of value to the other commissioners, the ones that may not have the technical experience. Are you telling me this now?
Okay, I'll stop.
Thank you, George. All right, we're going to go around the room now. We'll start with Counselor Sandoval.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Peck, for your service and reapplying. You mentioned, I've got a couple of questions for you. You mentioned your vast familiarity with the UDC code, which I do think is extremely helpful, but you mentioned that you were also a user of it, so you use it regularly. How will you be able to balance what's, you know, convenient for you as a user, and then the ultimate goal of the UDC, which is also to, you know, what's best for the, for the city?
Right, well, that's a great question, and it's a question, you know, as a commissioner, you have to ask yourself that when you're in the commission meetings, you know, and I've been able to make fair and impartial decisions on planning commission items, and it's the same with the code. As a professional engineer, we're sworn to an oath, we have to do what's best for the community, not what's best for whoever you're working for, whoever your employer is. You know, I look at it from, yeah, there's been several instances where it's like, okay, this would make things a whole lot easier for me as an engineer, my day-to-day job, but for the health and safety of our city, there's a different way you might have to go. It may not be the best thing, but it may, or, you know, the best thing for, for the bottom line, but it may be the best thing for the city. So you just have to use judgment as the bottom line. And you have to, me personally, you know, I'm, you know, not out for self-serving reasons. I have the interest of our city in mind, because if our city is protected and healthy, then we're all going to benefit from it.
Thank you. Follow-up question on that, you talked about ATLAS 14, you talked about what's best for the city, the health and safety of our city, so one thing that we're working on is a climate action and adaptation plan for the city. So I'd like to know how familiar you may be with that process in the city, and also what role do you think cities, and specifically the planning commission, can play in climate action and adaptation?
So I am not on the climate committee. I've heard about it, I've heard some brief updates about it. I'm not intimately familiar with what they're doing right now. I'm sure as it progresses, we will learn more and more. I think it's very important, it's obvious that we're experiencing climate change, and we have to be prepared for it, you know, whatever we do, whether it's, you know, better buildings, you know, lower emissions, which, you know, there's ways to decrease vehicle trips, those are the things that we have to explore. And the planning commission's role in that is to, as these, you know, committees are created and process what has to be done, our role is to make sure, and to make sure what's coming out of those committees is what's best for the city, through the TAC and then onto the planning commission. You know, like I said in my presentation, the planning commission's role is to, is to ensure rational growth in the city, and that's what we have to do. We have to weigh our growth versus what the planning committees are presenting to us.
Thank you, Counselor Sandoval. Counselor, your opinion?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Peck. Really appreciate your service, especially as chair. So I've got two questions, and they're related to your role as chair of this commission, and one of the most important things, I think, a chair has, or role the chair has, is to maintain the purview or control of what the planning commission is talking about. Give us some examples of how you do that as chair.
Well, so, you know, let's, similar, more volatile meetings, you know, at, you know, the role is to kind of control the flow of the meeting. You know, so you have citizens to be heard, and you open and close the public hearing formally, and it never fails when it's an issue that is contentious, somebody stands up and starts talking out of turn, and you just have to be forceful, you just have to say, look, please, take your seat, your time to speak is over, you know, you weren't signed up to speak, or the public hearing is closed. There's been a couple instances over the past two years that I've actually had to kind of say, look, if you don't sit down, you're going to be removed. You just have to be forceful.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. I think it is critical for the sake of procedure and process that we maintain some level of control at these meetings, and so I appreciate your work on that. The second piece is, tell us about, does our planning department brief you? Do you feel connected to our planning department? And what role do you see as the chair and communications with the planning department sort of happening?
So there is communication, and we do have briefings in our work... So there is communication, and we do have briefings in our work session, which is held prior to our planning commission meetings. In some cases, I felt, and, and I think the case that comes to mind first and foremost to me is the comprehensive plan. You know, I know what's happening, and, you know, I get information from a lot of different sources, so, you know, you know, I'm kind of up to date on what's happening, but a lot of the commission, if I wasn't in the industry and connected with folks at the city and, you know, whatnot, I, I wouldn't hear about it. I think that there could be a better job done of maybe more information shared between staff and the commission members on big ticket items like that. Most of our stuff, there doesn't need to be any more communication, but in those big items, comp plan, some of these other big things like climate plan, things like that, I think we should be brought along a little more gently versus, hey, here's the agenda. We have five days until we can.
Thank you, Mr. Peck, for, for your honesty. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Trino. Councilman Solvano.
Thank you, Mayor. George, you've got a lot of experience now on the planning commission, and you've heard overlapping discussions about the work and the agendas that come before you and the work and the discussion that comes before the city council. One of those big ticket items is, I'm gonna borrow a question from Councilman Trino that he asked another board member, which is, what is your role as a chair or member of the commission as it relates to affordable housing, and what levers or tools or decisions do you have for your commission that might play into the larger goals of increasing affordable housing in the city?
So I probably don't have any more power than any other commissioner when it comes to, excuse me, to pushing something forward like that, you know, in regards to affordable housing. You know, I hear, again, like I said, I hear about these things because, you know, I'm very active within the city, and it's because of what I do for a living, it's connected to that. You know, but as the chair, I don't think I have any more power. You know, I think that, that I do probably hear a little bit more information than some because of, you know, conversations with staff, conversations with whoever's on those committees, I'll hear about it. But I don't think I have any more information than anybody else. Is that, is that what you're asking, or?
Let me dig a little deeper. I'm imagining that there's cases that come before you all that are contentious that have to do with either multifamily, that have options for tax credit opportunities, they could see resistance from, from community members. If you're several years of having served, did you feel you were in a position to decide this is something that might be an overall public policy good, but may not be, there may be a tension with what the community is voicing and concerning at the dice, that might get citizens to be heard, so there's this conflict? Have you, in any examples that you've taken out, said, you know what, this is an important decision, this is an important component to housing inventory, that you sided with a project that may have gone against what communities want? That's the kind of example?
I got you. There have been instances, and it's, you know, related to kind of the land use portion of what we do, there's been instances where there's been citizens there that have wanted or not wanted something, but you look at the facts, you look at, you know, kind of like, well, this really does benefit the area, it does kind of fit in even though they don't want it, and, and sometimes you do vote against what, what the people are there to speak against. And that decision is based on what's good for, what we feel as a commission is good for the community as a whole.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Councilman Solvano and Councilman Biggron.
Thank you. The S A Tomorrow plan and looking at the large rezonations and the sub areas and the land use plans, I'm sorry, I keep, I haven't heard it included this. Many of our residents, many of the neighborhood associations are concerned that their neighborhood plans will go away, something that they've worked on for years and years, that they will go away and there will no longer be, let's say that should be the Eastern Triangle neighborhood plan. So what has been your position on that since you've gone on the commission?
So I do understand what their concern is, and it makes a lot of sense. I would be thinking the same thing. It's like, why are you changing what we have, you know, what are you gonna do to me? It's kind of the question. And I think that, you know, as long as what is in the existing plans is, is used in the creation of the revised plan for that area, and it, and, you know, the components of it are taken into account, and the plan that is implemented has community by it, then, then I think there shouldn't be any problems. That's the way it has to be done. You know, if you have a plan that the community created, and then all of a sudden we erase it, implement a plan that is not at all similar, that's where the community will, will have an issue.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with you on this one because as the chair, I wanted to ask you a little bit deeper, but a lot of the residents come forward and they have a sense of attachment to that plan. So how do you all reconcile that sense of attachment that they have out of all of that with maybe the new plan that's going to be? How do you all address that issue?
Well, I think you just have to make sure they understand and explain to them that, that the new plan is similar, if not the same. They're not losing any of the community feel that they have existing, or that they created their original plan to create. You know, we're not trying to change that. We're just, we're, we're creating new plans that are more comprehensive, are larger in scale. Their, their individual neighborhoods are, are going to remain the way they are. In other words, if you have a historical district that are moving, and we, no one would have any intention of doing it, so you just have to assure them that their concerns, their existing community plan is being taken into account.
Thank you, Councilman Biggron. Thank you very much, George. Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
The next applicant, Mayor, is Smita Bhakta.
Mayor, we're giving everyone two minutes for a statement, and then we'll go around with questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for taking the time today to meet with all of us. My name is Smita Bhakta, and I'd like to share with you some of the reasons why I'd like to serve on the planning commission, and also give you a little bit of information about my background. I was born and raised in London in the U K, and I attended law school there before I emigrated. I then went to University of Texas in Austin and majored in government and went back to law school, because I guess I'm a London. I moved to San Antonio in 2004, and I've practiced law in San Antonio ever since, primarily in the area of real estate transactions. San Antonio is now my home, and I really couldn't imagine living anywhere else at this point. I'm pretty involved in the local community. I vote professionally in the real estate industry, and also personally in the Indian community, and also in my children's school communities. I am inspired to serve our city more and get more involved for a variety of reasons. I recently completed leadership of San Antonio, and it's given me an even deeper appreciation for the role that each of us needs to play in our city, not by accident, I was a part of Team Civic Engagement, and so planning commission for me is really the best fit for me to get civically engaged, just because of my background. As a real estate attorney, I have subject matter knowledge in the area, and I would be the only lawyer on the planning commission. I appreciate the importance of the orderly planning of our city. I understand that the bulk of the commission's work is approving plaques, which the commission doesn't have discretion on, and in that regard, I understand the local government code requirements. I've worked extensively with plaques. I understand the legal nuances and development issues that need to be considered in the planning process. I also understand that plan amendments, which can be discretionary, require careful deliberation in order to allow the city to grow in a thoughtful way while protecting the character of our individual neighborhoods. So, you know, with more than a million people moving to the city in the next 20 years, it's important, is that my timer?
Go ahead, please.
It's important to think about how our decisions affect not just the city at large, but more importantly, the individual neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go around now with questions. We'll start with Councilwoman Sanval.
Thank you very much for your application. I have a, well, actually, I'm so glad you made San Antonio your home. I think you have the whole world to choose from, but you chose San Antonio, so thank you. I wanted to ask you about climate action and adaptation. The city's currently developing a plan for climate action and adaptation, so I wanted to know if you're familiar with that process that the city's developing, and what role you think you might, the city can play in climate action?
I'm glad I chose San Antonio as my home, because San Antonio is such an awesome progressive city that comes up with plans like this. Actually, not familiar with that particular plan, and I guess I would probably approach it the same way I'd approach anything, kind of like a lawyer, I'd probably collect all the available data, information available to me, and make a decision on that basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your application. While the planning commission doesn't have direct purview over zoning, a lot of the cases will lead to zoning. And so my question to you, you mentioned that you're familiar with some of the codes. How familiar are you with chapter 35 of the U D C?
Somewhat familiar, but if you're gonna ask me a specific code question, I may not be able to answer it.
Okay, I mean, I think the key is to understand that there's, as you pointed out, that there's connections to a much bigger picture.
Right.
And, you know, I just wanna ask, what do you think about the, the role the planning commission has in terms of how it relates very much to a lot of zoning cases? How do you think that's gonna impact some of the zoning cases?
I'm sorry, I don't follow the question.
Well, so, for example, you talked about neighborhoods, right, and protection of neighborhoods, so a lot of, a lot of the decisions you make will have an impact in terms of what is moved forward in terms of a zoning case, and how it would impact a neighborhood. So I think I just wanna hear your, your thoughts on the planning commission's role in, in being a part of that. While you don't have direct purview, you do have some, some kind of influence in connection to that.
Well, I think it's, as I said, bifurcated. I think if it's a plat review issue, then the planning commission's role is limited to that plat review. I don't think that they have a broader role than that. But if we're talking about a larger, you know, discretionary matter, like a, like a plan, like a kind of master plan for a neighborhood, then I think, you know, they're kind of part of the equation, working kind of hand in hand with the zoning to come up with a solution.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Trino. Councilwoman Biggron.
Your familiarity with the, your familiarity with the S A Tomorrow plan and the different sub area land use plans that will go eventually in front of the planning commission to have review, what is your knowledge on the S A Tomorrow plan, and what is your takeaway, I guess, from your position right now?
I mean, I'm somewhat familiar with the S A Tomorrow plan, and I think overall it is a good plan for our city. I know a lot of work went into it, and I think overall it is a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Mayor and council, the next applicant is Louis Bhakta.
And Adam, as you're coming up, we're giving everyone two minutes for a statement, and then we'll go around with, with questions.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, thank you very much for making time for me, I started my throat was a little bit scratchy. I've done this before, so I'm not quite as nervous as last time, but when I was trying to think of what to say, it occurred to me that planning, by the way, as I'm planning out what I'm just gonna do for the rest of my life, I'm supposed to be like sitting with the stackers hard behind me, throat's supposed to be, but things don't work out always as planned, so when I came home, I still had sort of this energy and this, this cookie, this sandwich, you know, drive for a buck, so it's, you know, it's a noble thing, and I think it's easy to forget that, especially lately. So I'm very excited to be here then, to have this opportunity to talk to you today.
Great, thank you, Adam. We're gonna go around now, we'll start with Councilwoman Sanval.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Bhakta. One of the things that the planning commission will do in the coming months is review the climate action and adaptation plan that's already being developed by the city of San Antonio. Can you totally be familiar with that, with what's going on with that, and also what role you think the city can play in climate action and adaptation?
I've been unfamiliar with it insofar as the S A 2020 and S A Tomorrow plan, so, you know, understanding that, that that kind of sustainability is part of the core of the research and management in the S A Tomorrow plan, so I don't know, clean up the air myself, but, I'm sorry, but, but that's how it is, your question.
Thank you.
Councilman Trino.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bhakta. Appreciate your application, and just wanna ask you, what role do you feel the planning commission has in affordable housing and the, the needs that we're currently seeing in our city?
Well, I mean, I think it's, affordable housing is, you know, one of those, we get one of those things that falls inside that, that the S A Tomorrow plan, in terms of sustainability again for, for, for the city. I mean, if you are constantly pushing people out of the downtown core, which you know we're focused on, and it brings so much good to the community, I think, you know, making sure that there are places all around the city, not just in certain parts, that there's affordable housing, it's part of the, part of the mission to do.
Thank you, Ms. Bhakta. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Adam.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, the next applicant is Julia Carrillo.
Julia, we're giving everyone two minutes, and then we'll go around with questions.
Sounds good, thank you. Good afternoon, council members, Mayor and staff. Thank you for taking the time to, under the opportunity to address you this afternoon. My name is Julia Carrillo. I am the, I'm sorry, I've been a resident of Texas, and specifically San Antonio, for the past eight years. As a professional, I manage the public policy division for the Edwards Aquifer Authority. I oversee the development of regulation, policy, legislation, and all under governmental efforts. I have worked in policy and planning my entire career, primarily focused on strategic and long-term planning for water resources and the natural resources sector. My career has taken me from a wholesale water provider in San Diego, California, to the San Antonio River Authority, and eventually the Edwards Aquifer Authority. As a resident, I am personally interested in planning and development occurring around San Antonio. As we all know, the city is growing, and with an anticipated increase of over a million residents in the next 20 years, I believe that it's imperative that responsible and sustainable development be at the forefront. I feel my professional background and education in public policy and public leadership give me a unique perspective and will help me on this commission. Ultimately, I want to be an engaged citizen and take an active role in my community, the community that I've chosen to establish roots and raise my children. So that's my comments. I'll try to be brief in respect of everyone's time that will take any questions.
Thank you, Julia. Councilwoman Sanval.
Thank you very much for your application, Mr. Carrillo. So I have a couple of questions for you. You mentioned that part of your work is in regulatory development for the Edwards Aquifer Authority. How do you think that will interact with your role on, on the planning commission?
I believe that it will actually help my position on the planning commission in that I've, I've seen the regulatory side, I've been on the regulatory side as well as, as a resident. I am aware of the need for, as I mentioned, responsible and sustainable development. I think there's a unique balance that has to be stricken between land use and development. I think there's a unique balance that has to be stricken between land use and development and ensuring that that's all done responsibly. So as I mentioned, as, as being a part of the Edwards Aquifer Authority and overseeing development and regulation, I'm sorry, regulation of development over the recharge zone specifically, it would allow me to have a more concerning eye as, as plans come through.
Thank you. I have another question for you. The city is currently developing a climate action adaptation plan. One of the roles or one of the functions of the Planning Commission will be to review that plan. Can you tell me, are you at all familiar with climate change or with the process that we're doing and what role do you think cities can play and the commission can play in climate action?
I'm not familiar with what the city is doing, I'll be honest. However, I think that the Planning Commission, I mean, that would be a wonderful opportunity to be at the forefront of that. I think that it's a very good idea that cities and municipalities take an active role in that because whether, I mean, whatever side of the aisle you're on, on that issue, there is, you know, climate change is occurring and it's incumbent upon the city leaders to address it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. Councilwoman Chirino.
Thank you, Mayor. While the Planning Commission does not have purview over zoning, you will be making recommendations in the City Council on UDC amendments. How comfortable are you with Chapter 35 of UDC?
I've been, I'll be honest, I'm not entirely familiar with the different chapters of the UDC. My level of familiarity with UDC is when I was working at the San Antonio River Authority and I worked closely with staff there as well as in TCI to implement changes to stormwater codes and development codes and trying to implement change to the UDC, but specifically Chapter 35.
You feel you get yourself familiarized pretty quick?
Yes, I think I could absolutely familiarize myself. In the role that I have with the Edwards, I've had to get up to speed with understanding rules and regulations, not only Edwards, but state-level regulations at a very quick speed and I'm very confident that I'd be able to do that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Chirino.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Chirino, I'm really interested in the work and career path that you've taken. I'm really glad that you've provided yourself as an applicant for the Planning Commission. Can you just tell me as your feedback for the future, how you found out about the position and what drove you to, to apply?
It's actually the conversation with another city manager, one of the suburban cities here in San Antonio. She'll become a, sorry, as a colleague and professional mentor through my graduate program at UT, I was introduced to her. And just speaking to her and ways to become more involved without actually, without being in the city or being on council is an opportunity to become engaged citizen. She recommended looking into different planning commissions, or, sorry, different commissions. So in looking at the list of available commissions, the planning commission is what actually got my attention the most. And, you know, I'm not an engineer, but policy and planning, I think, go hand in hand with development. So I feel that my background really lends well to this commission.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. Thank you very much, Ms. Chirino.
Thank you all for your time.
Mayor, Council, Tiffany Chalpadi was tentatively going to submit a statement and we have checked and called her and still have not received a statement, so she will not be here today. Nicholas Creel will not be here today and Ronnie Gass could not be here today, but he did submit a statement and it is included in your package. So the next applicant is Jennifer Ramos.
That won't be too long because I know I'm between y'all and with lunch or maybe your afternoon. So thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to come and present myself for the appointment of the Planning Commission. I'm a lifelong resident in San Antonio, graduated from UIW with my bachelor's and my master's in 2004 with my master's. In 2004, I was elected to Alamo College as Board of Trustees and I served there until 2008 when I got the appointment to City Council. And so I served on City Council from 2008 to 2012. During my tenure, we did some really great things. I have to say city manager, correct? That was the decade of downtown. That was the reinvestment of the east side zone, which led to the submission, excuse me, the submission to HUD for the approval of the promise zone. So it was a really great time to see the east side kind of redevelop. Sorry, I'm kind of, I got nervous. Also on top of that, during my tenure, we went through some tough times too. We had the nuclear project as well through CPS and so that was a difficult time. So we've seen some good and some bad and that happens in every city council and every, every year you have a lot of different projects that come, come to fruition and you make the best decisions that you have with the, with the amount of material and the amount of information you have at hand. So also I was able to be a part of some great things in District 3, the opening of Texas A&amp;M, opening Toyota Plant. I know we can counsel themselves down and went, went to battle on who's going to keep Texas A&amp;M in our district because we went through redistricting while I was there. Thank you so much. At the same time, I was also part of the submission for the city when we started the application process for these, for the world heritage of the missions. So I've seen a lot of great things happen for the city. More recently, I've worked with Merced Housing Texas, where it's an affordable housing developer. Okay, is that it? Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you, Councilwoman. There is certainly a lot on your application and I appreciate the opportunity to meet, to met with you in advance and run through your outstanding qualifications. I do have a couple of questions for you. One of them has to do with your work for HAF and Associates and your business development. How do you think that might affect your work as a planning commissioner?
I have to tell you, a great thing about HAF, we are 750 employees statewide. Our main corporate office is in Richardson and in our local office, we do really concentrated disciplines. We really do public works, highway projects with tech stuff. We do a lot of public work and civil and municipal work. Land development, I have to tell you, we have probably a 1% kind of clientele for land developers. So I don't see a huge conflict at all. I've already also spoken with the City of Chinas office as well to, to make sure that there was no conflict, especially, you know, I love to work. So I want to make sure that there was no boundaries to be passed or any perceived conflicts. But I don't see that there would be an issue. If anything, it's an advantage because I'm able to understand also that planning process, surveying how actually properties and parcels are developed and how an engineering firm can do their due diligence and make sure that there's proper runoff or there's proper retention on the property as these developments are coming online. How to build, you know, apartment communities where it's not so impactful to neighborhoods as far as parking and these additional issues that, that the citizens face when big developments come into their neighborhoods and their existing neighborhood and you have what we use so-called gentrification at times. So I think my background now will help me in those kind of tough decisions and tough discussions and help bring a different balance view because I also see the aspect of the neighborhood as well. So it's not just the engineering side that I represent, but my passion is for the city of San Antonio to grow. I love my city and I want to continue to be a part of that planning process.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. My, my other question, you talked about runoff and drainage. So one thing that the city's developing right now is a climate action and adaptation plan. Are you familiar with that process? If you are, I'd like to know. And then also what role you think the city can play in climate action and adaptation?
I'm not very familiar with the process or what point you're at, at the process. I do, I do have some experience when we're bringing in new concepts and how important it is to really bring every stakeholder to the table. We need to get everybody involved from neighborhoods to elected officials to the business community and make sure there's an open dialogue and open transparent process. If not, it always gets delayed. You always have 30 questions right at each session or a session and you're trying to solve these problems. So I would just want to be a part of the conversation, making sure that everybody's voice is recognized, everyone from District 5 to District 10 and District 3 to District 9. There needs to be a balance of voice and you're not going to satisfy everybody. I mean, there's going to be issues that you're not able to satisfy everybody, but you have to try your hardest and make sure that you have that communication back and forth to make sure that everybody understands we have, we have to deal with climate change and we have to deal with the betterment of our community and make sure that we have a lasting impact for our next generation and generations to come.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval.
Councilwoman Chirino.
Ramos, thank you for applying. I want to just ask you, what role do you see the Planning Commission playing in addressing affordable housing in San Antonio?
Well, it's, I think everybody that's involved in City Council, whether in the city, should be involved in those conversations. So Planning Commission definitely has a huge stake in it. I also, my background, I think it's going to it, but I worked for Merced Housing Texas, which is a nonprofit affordable housing developer for here in San Antonio and the state of Texas. And so I saw the need for affordable housing when I was on council, but I don't think there was such a concentrated push at the time. And now you see the impact because you see that we are, we are in need, desperate need of affordable housing. And while working there at Merced Housing Texas, whether it was affordable housing in the, in the aspect of multifamily or whether it was people, keeping people in their current homes and making sure that they had the tools to reinvest in their homes so they're not left out and cold and not able to keep a head, I mean, keep a roof over their head, I saw it firsthand. So the Planning Commission definitely has a huge role in, in this conversation as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. I appreciate you mentioning this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chirino. Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to thank the Housewoman for willing to step up and serve again and pray for us here.
Thank you very much for applying. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramos.
Mayor, Council, the last applicant is here is Sharice Brown Algrini. She is not here. I'm sure you're up.
Sharice, we're giving everyone two minutes and then we'll go around with questions. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the invitation to come here today. I'm Sharice Brown Algrini. I'm not a native of San Antonio. I came here in 2001, living on the northwest side for a very short time and then moved into the La Vaca neighborhood in 2002 where I've been a renter at first and now a homeowner for a number of years. So I've been around for a while to see some of the changes and how we perceive with development in the urban core as well as throughout the city. A little bit about me, I'm a pretty active member of my community. I've worked a lot with our neighborhood and various communities on some of the housing and land use issues. And I'm currently the La Vaca Neighborhood President. I've been there for a year now and was on the board before that. And through that role, have worked with the task force on some of the zoning change discussions, some of them that you heard earlier today. And have spent a great deal of time with the SA Tomorrow planners on discussions, mostly on how it impacts neighborhoods like mine and the urban core. For the past year, I was invited to participate in the Mayor's Housing Task Force, representing the Equitable and Resilient Neighborhoods Technical Work Group, which was a valuable experience. And one of the things I appreciated was that there were such a diverse array of people that were involved in those discussions. My day job is as a public health professional. I have worked for the city and the state before. Currently, I work for a nonprofit that does public health education and legislative advocacy. And typically, you don't think of a public health professional as somebody that would be interested in planning. I think from my experience representing my neighborhood and my community, that's pretty obvious, but there actually is a big move nationwide to integrate public health with urban planners. And it's been a long process and a lot of people don't see how obvious that is, but when you start to think about it, it does become more obvious. Because public health people think about every decision we make, how does it impact the health of our individuals and health of our community? That could be how roads are developed, how they're used, et cetera. So it's up there.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you very much, Dr. Algrini, for applying. My first question was going to be how your work might impact your role on the Planning Commission, so I think you've addressed that.
Sort of, yes. So quickly explain. So my, my regular job is actually in humanization's education. So my, my, my paid job is not very many, but because I'm a public health professional, I spend a lot of time in public health meetings and discussions and annual meeting of a public health association, et cetera, which really does influence my thinking on public health and urban planning.
Thank you. And then my next question has to do with climate change. So the city's currently developing a climate action and adaptation plan. Do you know if you're familiar with that process and what role you think cities can play in climate action and adaptation?
I'm somewhat familiar with the process, mostly by following in and talking to some of the folks that are involved and trying to get them to come to speak for us. It is an absolutely critical issue and San Antonio is at the forefront of it, we really are. We can do so much here and even though whatever decisions are made nationwide as a city, we can address some of the issues that do in fact, affect climate, but locally and more broadly across the state. So that could be how, how we develop green roads, how we develop in transportation, that can impact the overall climate, which, when we think about climate change, it's a broad thing and most of us like to see success quickly. And in public health, we know that success doesn't happen really quickly, it's a very long process. So having, making decisions that will positively impact the issue of climate change may not be that obvious and something we can celebrate, by the way, but we know will be better for the community overall.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Chirino.
Thank you, Mayor. Tell us what, what you, what role do you think the Planning Commission will play in addressing affordable housing in San Antonio?
Well, in determining how land is used in different parts of the city. And we, we talk a lot, I, I talk a lot about the urban core because that's what I'm most familiar with, but affordable housing needs to happen across the entire city. And so how we impact development, what kind of development? Are we making sure that jobs are in the place where the affordable housing is located? We talked about it in terms of areas of opportunity. And if we're going to make a decision to allow use in a certain way, does it include all aspects? And so sometimes we think about the positives, we don't think about the negatives. And I want us as a planning commission to think about what are the negative impacts and how can we address those before? So I'm going to go back to public health. In public health, we talk about prevention and I think that applies in planning as well. Can we prevent the negative impacts from happening if we take a step back and think about that? So that does affect affordable housing. I spent a long time talking about affordable housing last year at the Housing Task Force. That's going to be a long conversation to get into, but I think that we can make an impact by how we determine where it's going to go, what accessibility there is. Is, you can put in affordable housing, and we talk about affordable housing, that means a lot of things. Most people think of it as low income. It's not just low income, it's the 80 to 100% AMI as well and that's what we're lacking in this city. Are we going to be able to put that there as well as accessible roads that go there, bus transportation, other, other means of, of transport so that we're not adding to the climate change problems by requiring people to use their vehicles more often or be providing public transport, et cetera, to that affordable housing? There's also the affordable housing for the lower income, which is a whole different topic.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your application. I'm thrilled to get to read through your academic experience and your work experience, really well-qualified candidate. I just want to ask about, you know, what drove you to find the application and motivation to, to apply? As you've got, you know, president of La Vaca Neighborhood Association, a few of the things with the Mayor's Housing Task Force, the belief you believe that, and if you have a passion for wanting to get involved, why, why the Planning Commission?
So as you, if you saw my resume, you see that I've done a lot of different things in my life and so it all kind of comes full circle. I, I participated in the Latina Leadership Institute this past spring, which was an amazing experience. A lot of that was geared towards getting us ready to participate in boards and commissions. I had already decided I wanted to do that. And honestly, it was a matter of looking through the different commissions, seeing which one really worked for me. And I think having been involved with my neighborhood association for a number of years and then more recently as president, I've been involved in a lot of discussions about planning, both formally as well as we have another informal group that is mostly urban core residents who've been involved in more formal capacities and informal capacities. We have sort of a monthly lunch. We have sort of a monthly lunch to discuss housing and land use. That's given me a lot of ideas about where we can go with it. So those were probably the motivating factors. I felt like I wanted to do something, and this would be a good role for me to step into, given my experience with my neighborhood, but I'm going to come back to public health. That is what drives me, and a public health professional thinks about the whole community. We're different from physicians who's, their focus is on an individual. So as a public health professional, we're looking at how does our decision affect everybody in the community, not just getting that one person well. And I think that relates a lot to what we can do in planning, is how do the decisions we make, how are they going to impact the broader community?
Thank you, Councilwoman Saldana.
Thank you very much, Sharice. For your application. 1:30 p.m. on this 13th day of November 2018 pursuant to the authority granted by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code ETCS, the Texas Open Meetings Act, the Governance Council Committee will now recess into executive session to discuss and deliberate the appointment of Planning Commission members pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 personnel matters. Unfortunately, not everyone we want to be on the commission is going to get selected because they have a limited number of spots, but I would tell you that we want to find places for all of you to serve our community, because it's a very impressive group of people, and we want to thank you for your stepping forward and applying to serve our community. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion for appointments to the Planning Commission.
Councilwoman Tring.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion for the term expiring 2019 in October, Christopher Garcia, and the following would expire October of 2020. That would read as follows. June Katchik, George Peck, Judith Garion, Jennifer Ramos, Sharice Roar Alagre.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for the slate of Planning Commission members effective immediately. Any comments, my colleagues? Okay, hearing none.
And Mayor, just want to add that this will go on the full council agenda for November 29.
November 29, end of the month. Okay. Thank you again, everyone. Hearing no further comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That is the remainder of our Governance Committee agenda. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.